All right, I'm gonna call the Planning Commission meeting to order tonight, 6:00 PM. Welcome, those that are here, and we'll start with our flag salute with Commissioner Watts.
Please join me, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, roll call please.
Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Hegel.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Commissioner Turley Trejo, I mean Chair.
Here.
And we have one excused absence from Commissioner Ruiz.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments that are not on agendized items?
We haven't received any.
Okay. So we're gonna move down to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments and submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. And the first item is our minutes from September 6th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved?
I'll second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Watts, seconded by Commissioner Hegel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and motion carried, and that's all we have there. All right, we will move to the public hearing. We have two items on the public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in supportive or in opposition to the approval of their projects or projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted by to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within fifteen calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right, so tonight, we have item number two, planning application number PA23-0252, a certificate of historical appropriateness to demolish an approximately nine hundred and nine, nine hundred and ninety-eight square foot historic structure, Al Otto House. The project is located at 28717 Pujol Street. Eric.
Thank you. Mike, can you put up the presentation, please? Thank you very much. Planning application PA23-0252 is a certificate of historical appropriateness to demolish an approximately nine hundred and ninety-eight square foot historic structure, commonly known as the Al Otto House. The project is generally located here in the red boxed area you see before you, on Pujol Street. Just a little background on the Al Otto House. It was designated as a historic structure per the Old Town specific plan. It was built in approximately eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty-two, somewhere in that window. As I mentioned already, it totals approximately nine hundred and ninety-eight square feet or so. And over the years, it has really fallen into what could best be described as severe disrepair. The applicant is seeking to demolish the structure, but please know that once they, if they receive an approval for the certificate of historical appropriateness, they still have to go through building and safety and get a demolition permit. So that would have to take place also. That happens over the counter. Take a quick look at the house here. On the left, I have the site plan. And the house is here on the red box area you see. You can see where Pujol Street is. And then just to the right here, we have the floor plan. Little three-bedroom house, bathroom, kitchen, dining room area. The reason we're here today is because the specific plan requires a certificate of historical appropriateness be approved if anybody's going to demolish or modify, relocate, or alter in any way a home that is identified in the specific plan as historic, and this one is. Therefore, we have to go through this process. The applicant enlisted the services of a structural engineer to take a look at the structure to see if it was indeed salvageable. Unfortunately, the report from the engineer noticed a significant settlement, which is basically causing the home to pull itself apart, if you will, from the inside out. It's kind of coming apart from the sides. The structural walls, interior, they're inadequate. There's deflection showing in the framing members. The underside, the flooring, the underside of the flooring is also having direct contact with the ground, and it's having related damage with that. The report went on to say that the structure is basically unsafe and not repairable. I'll just show you a few photos of what came in that report. These two images show the structure's contact with the ground. And here, it's basically being held up by some blocks and some bricks. There's no foundation, as you can see. In the next photo, we got one of the side walls here is so bad, light's starting to come through because it's basically falling apart. The image to the right, it's self-explanatory, that's a ceiling starting to come in, portion of it fall apart. Can take a look at some of the elevations here. You can see in this red boxed area, you can kind of see the settlement and how this, the right side of the house here is starting to fall in and pull itself apart. And there's a couple other elevations as well. So staff took this report and didn't take it at face value. We turned it over to our independent third-party structural engineer that we utilize for other projects in the city. We had them review this report to say, hey, you know, does this make sense to you? Do you agree with these findings? And Interwest, the company that we utilize, they agreed with the findings. They also believe that based on what they see in the report, what they see on the site, the house is too far gone to rehabilitate it. We also enlisted the services of the Temecula Historical Society, and they had an opportunity to review the house and the information. And they also agreed that the house was too far gone to save it, unfortunately. They did have a few recommendations they wanted. There's a plaque on the home, they'd like to have that back. In the future, if there's any future development, they'd like to have a plaque on that development, which kind of signifies, this was the Al Otto House. Gives a little information, things like that. They also like to incorporate a few elements architecturally into any type of new design. I spoke with Rebecca Farmbach from the Historical Society. She talked about things like paint colors could be utilized, maybe a little bit of a front porch, because this home had a front porch, stuff like that. But at the end of the day, though, we will be, we will have to approve a project that meets all the requirements of the current specific plan. We do have a revision to one of the conditions of approval. That's condition approval number nine, and it's dealing with the Historical Society. It basically said that originally, that the project shall comply with the correspondence provided by the Temecula Valley Historical Society. We're gonna change that language a little bit to say the project shall consider the recommendations included, et cetera, et cetera. And the reason for that is because, again, we have to, if something else comes in, we can only approve it based on what's required by the Old Town specific plan. So we're still kind of governed by those requirements. If the applicant were to come in on something that was an exact copy of what was there, well, it doesn't meet the SP requirements, so now we're kind of stuck. So we want to have some flexibility there. The applicant who's in the audience has indicated that they are willing to work with us and trying to make sure that everything the Historical Society has requested is implemented in whatever it is they decide to move forward. From a SEQA perspective, staff has determined the project is exempt from SEQA per Section 1506b3. That's essentially the common sense exemption, is literally what it says in the law. And based on the information that's presented, staff recommend that the Planning Commission approve the project based on the required findings and subject it to the draft conditions of approval. This concludes our presentation. I'm available for questions. As indicated, the applicant is in the audience if you'd like to speak with him. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Questions of staff?
No? No?
I have a couple questions for staff. One of the questions was, how many historic buildings are in this historic area that the city is classifying as historic?
Sure, so we have sixteen historic structures in Old Town, and then the specific plan also identifies, I believe, six outside of Old Town.
And this structure is classified historic because of certain elements? Because it's been used in a certain way in the past, and the specific plan designated this?
Yeah, so like approximately twenty-five, thirty years ago or so, the city went through and created a list of historic structures. The Historical Society could probably provide more information on that. I don't have the exact reasoning as to why this home was included in that. I mean, obviously, we know it was built in the eighteen eighties, it's extremely old. But that, that list was created, like I said, probably about twenty, thirty years ago at some point.
And was a, like a historical report done to document how this building was used and to identify the historical characteristics of this?
No, we don't have any type of reports that talks about why. All we know is, in that timeframe I gave, it was added to a registry at some point.
So it's, so it's registered as a historic building?
For the city. It's not in a state registry, it's not in a national registry.
I believe there was an article in the newspaper, either today or yesterday, regarding the building, and that I believe this is not the original location of the building, that it's been moved several times over the last hundred years or more. And that at one point, it served as a post office.
That is correct. The Historical Society did tell us about that. It was at one point used as a post office for a short period of time.
So I think part of your question was, you know, is there, has the history of that building been documented? Is that what you're asking?
So, so when something is identified historic, usually, I was looking for a report, a historical report done by an architect, documenting the building was built in this time. You know, these are the main characteristics of the building. The historic, building is historic because of X, Y, Z reasons. Today, that building is still historic, it still has ninety percent of the original facade. I mean, these are the types of documentation that happens in the report. It's like a report of the building.
Yeah, we don't have anything like that for this building and probably many of the other ones here in the city. We just have what made it into the Old Town specific plan. I can tell you that, I do know that this building had a lot of add-ons over the years. Like that back porch was put on at some point, well before the city even incorporated. The front porch, I'm not entirely sure when that was put in, but the owner had indicated that that was added on at some point as well.
So the Old Town specific plan to demolish what is identified in the specific plan. There's a table that identifies structures that are considered to be historic structures in the city and in Old Town. So there's no really debate about whether or not this is identified as a historic structure in the specific plan. I mean, that's physically in black and white in the specific plan that it is. So we didn't go through a process to justify whether or not it was a historic structure or not, because it's already listed. And what the specific plan is requiring is it to demolish a building that is listed in the specific plan as a historic structure. It needs to go through this process and come before you all for a certificate of historical appropriateness. And so that was the purpose of the engineering report, was to address the requirements of the Old Town specific plan that would require that we provide, you know, whatever justification it is of why this structure isn't safe and should be torn down. So that's why we're here tonight, and that's what we're putting before you.
That's it for me.
Good. Okay, yeah, the only, and I don't know if it's not really a question, I guess it is a question. So you said, can you go back to the slide where you're changing the wording for the Historical Society on their recommendation? So when we come back and discuss, but I, I would like to see in there strongly consider the recommendations. Just because I also talked with Rebecca Farmbach today, and, which helped me in this matter. And I, you know, she's been working with the Historical Society forever, since its inception, I think. And so, I, you know, I think, and maybe this should be in my discussion, but I just think if, if that's a possibility, that's something that I would like to suggest, that we're not just consider it, but we strongly consider what the recommendations are, because that's what we're doing here. You know, it's a historical building, so that was one thing. I didn't have any other questions. You have a question?
Yeah. Could you put up a slide on what those recommendations are? Do we have one?
I don't have a slide with her recommendations. I have it in the staff report. I don't have a slide that shows her recommendations.
So it was the plaque needs something there to recognize?
Yes, it's to, it's to give back the plaque that's on the building. It's to put a new plaque, kind of right at the sidewalk area, if a new building construction comes in. And it's also to utilize some of the materials or architecture in a new development. Those are her three.
Okay. My concern was with the third condition, in that it's so open-ended and vague that it could be interpreted or championed for a lot of reasons that may be, that may conflict with whatever should happen in the future there. So I wouldn't want to see the applicant or whoever ends up with that property to be tied up in some sort of a discussion on what that means, what the elements mean. I mean, that's pretty wide. And so my feeling was, the applicant has already indicated he's willing to abide by them. And as long as we can get into it, they'll consider him. I felt that was just a better tenable position for the applicant and maybe a future applicant as well. So my feeling was, since that's such an open-ended nebulous thing, I didn't want to see that locked in. My feeling was, that's too strong of language to have it locked in for the applicant. And I would like to at least, since they've indicated they would comply with that, or to the best of their ability, I just wanted to reinforce that by saying, consider them, not strongly. But if that's what you feel is fine, I don't have any huge objection.
We can discuss that later.
As I say, we should probably hold that.
Yeah, so are there any other questions of staff? No? Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant up. Make sure that you turn on the, is there a little button? Oh, it's on now.
It's on?
You just have to speak close to it.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Al Aguirre, with AK and Associates, and I represent my client on this project. And if, and we agree to all the conditions of approval, and we'll work with staff when any building is proposed on a site.
Okay, do you have anything to add to what's been said?
No, I concur with everything that was shown and said.
Okay, are there any questions of the applicant? Bob?
There is a lot next to it that is, has nothing on it. Does the, do, does your client own that lot, do you know?
Yes, he does.
They do? Okay. That's all I had to say.
Any other questions of the applicant? No? No? Okay, do we have any public? Thank you. We might bring you back up, I don't know. So don't get too comfortable. Do we have any public comments?
We have none.
We have none, okay. All right, and there's no other questions of the applicant or staff at this time, correct? Correct? Yes? Okay. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and this is our time to discuss. So I'm gonna start on this end.
Okay, so...
We're not gonna make a motion yet, we're just gonna discuss.
So I, the, the report that was made, and I read it very clear, very, very detailed. The report that was made identifies structurally mostly what's happening. All historic buildings aren't built with sheer walls. All historic buildings aren't built to today's standards, and most of them are unsafe, because they're not built to today's standards. They had a different way of building. Another thing that I want to consider also is that I can't make a decision to demo a historic building without an actual historical report done by either a historian or an architectural historian, someone that actually documents where was this building originally placed, or where did it come from? What is original, what isn't original? Is the patio original? Is the facade isn't original? How much historic, how much of the historic building is really historic? And without that type of documentation, I can't support the demo of a historic building in a historic area. And that's, that's what I believe. It is dilapidated, but it looks like everything is original from the facade deciding I drove by. It has the original born button, it even has the original screen door. Maybe something wasn't built originally, something was added, but I can't tell. And that's what that report will be able to tell me. And if that report would be able to tell me, hey, you know what? Seventy percent of this building isn't even historic, because it doesn't have this, it doesn't have that, or it's not original, then I can make a determination and say, hey, this, this, this building shouldn't even been historic to begin with. That's, that's how I feel.
Okay, Bob?
I guess one of, I'm curious how much documentation the Historical Society has from, at least from the newspaper article, which was based upon their, you know, their, an interview with them. It seemed like they had a lot of, lot of documentation. Now, I don't know whether it would come up to the standard of what you're, you would consider as an historical report, but I'd be curious if we knew whether they had it fully documented or not. And perhaps even if they have what would be considered an historical report that would satisfy that need.
If I could just jump in really quick, I do have correspondence from the Historical Society saying that they believe the house is too far deteriorated to preserve, and they will not protest its demolition. And no sign of report like you're looking for, but that's the position they're coming from. So I wanted to put that in there for the discussion.
Thank you. Are you done?
I think for now, anyway.
Okay. Aguirre?
Erica, I think you already said that the, the building wasn't on the state list or the federal register, correct? So if it was important from a historic standpoint, would not, that process probably been utilized to designate that facility?
It probably would have at this point.
But somebody made the decision that it wasn't, either it wasn't important enough to go to that level, or it just didn't qualify?
It was more, I think, considered to be locally significant, but not perhaps truly a historic structure in that context.
But not like the bank, which was, had a strong history behind it, as well as a few other historical buildings. Okay, so that's what I wanted to clarify.
Anything else over here?
To answer Commissioner Watts, so from my experience, even if something is historic or is not, there would be report documenting everything, documenting how much of a percentage of that building is historic. So in order for you to register a building, you know, the applicant, I mean, the property owner actually has to come forward with an application to register that building as a historic building.
That's, that, I'm sorry, but that's not exactly what we're dealing with here, because this was done through the specific plan process, where it was designated as a locally significant historic structure. So it's not on a state or national register, as we've identified, or any registry for that matter, other than on a table within the Old Town specific plan.
That was my understanding is, if it's registered, that it actually goes through a process, a documentation process.
It's not registered?
No, I understand it's not registered, but it's still historic. It's designated historic in a historic area.
I do appreciate your concerns.
And it's not that dilapidated.
Pictures look pretty bad, but I must say, I have had some experience with historical buildings. I've, my career has spanned six state historical parts, including Old Town, San Diego, California Citrus State Historic Park, Malacca Diggins State Historic Park, which are all important historical events in the state of California. And if, for you to even breathe on the walls in those places, it's very, very sensitive from a historical perspective. So when I look at things like that compared to this, there is a clear distinct difference. And as I said, the specific plan will list the historic structures in there, and which ones are significant and which ones are not that significant from a historic standpoint. So I understand your desire to seek more and further information, but it seems to me that we've crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is on this one from a city perspective, as far as meeting the requirements of demolition and getting the Historical Society to agree to it. So it seems to me that if it was, if there was any concern at all, that the people in the Historical Society would probably alert the city that, let's, let's slow down and look at this. But that's, that's my guess, because I didn't talk to Rebecca like others. But I know that her knowledge of the entire history of this valley is probably unmatched. And I think most people in Temecula will find that opinion, but that's all I have to say on that.
Anything else? Okay, I will just, and I appreciate you bringing up that information. I also agree with Commissioner Watts, I think. And because when I first read it, I was like, oh, this makes me sad. Like, this building was built in the eighteen hundreds, and, oh my goodness, you know? And then after I talked to Rebecca, she, first of all, really appreciated the fact of me calling her and, you know, recognizing that we do, I trust her, because I've lived here a long time, and I've seen what she's done for this city in the historical perspective. And, and she's like, you know, we really looked at this, and we just don't feel like it can be saved. And that's really kind of the bottom line. And, and I think, you know, I think there was somebody in Old Town who really was wanting to save it, and she said, buy it, buy it and save it. But at this point, what, what is there, and I went out there also, can't be saved. I'm not an expert on that, but, and even in looking at it, I'm not an expert at it, but I trust her opinion on it, I guess, and that helped me to come to the conclusion where I feel like I could vote on this, to do that, as hard as it is for me, because I love historical things. So that's where I'm at. Any other comments? No?
I'll just say, I, I agree. I mean, I have rehabbed a couple historical homes from the Civil War days, and the thing that I always found was, when you started the project, it was a whole lot worse when you ended the project. And, you know, I'm not sure if, well, particularly since it's not a California historical property, what, I would assume that you have to meet all of the requirements of the state to be able to make it habitable again, which I think would be, the cost of doing that would be far greater than building something new probably twice, particularly of that, that size, that it just, it's just not, not something you'd get anybody to do. That, that property would just sit there and get, you know, continue to fall apart, so.
All right, any other discussion? All right, do we have a motion?
Make the motion, and we accept the staff's recommendation.
Oh, well, before we do that, actually, I made a, I made a recommendation on strongly consider. And I understand what you're saying. I, I, I don't... I, I s- I don't think strongly consider means that we have to do exactly what they say. I, I think that's what we're trying to get away from. But I also think that it's important for us to listen to that recommendation because of where it is and that it was a historical site, and I think they will be reasonable about that. I don't think it would be a problem, but I just feel like the wording sounds like, eh, you know, maybe we'll consider what you're saying.
I don't see that as a problem at all, and if you want to add that as an amendment to the motion, uh, that would be fine with me.
Well, I think changing it from required to considered makes a huge difference, so.
Strongly considered, yeah.
Okay.
So it'd be strongly considered, I guess, would be the language?
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No, no.
Opposed, okay. So three to one on that, you got that, Denise? All right, motion carried. Okay, we're gonna go to item number three. Planning application number PA two-three dash zero-one-seven-five, a conditional use permit for a woodcraft art studio to obtain a type forty-two on-sale beer and wine alcohol license, and PA two-three dash zero-three-four-three, a finding of public convenience or necessity at the commercial site located at three-one-oh-nine-three Temecula Parkway, Suite D five. Hyman, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Thank you, Mike. So as you mentioned, this is a conditional use permit application for a woodcraft studio to obtain a type forty-two license, which is the on-sale beer and wine alcohol license and the public convenience or necessity application. So this image shows an aerial view of the address at three-one-zero-nine-three Temecula Parkway and Suite D five within the project site itself. The project is located within the Temecula Creek Plaza, which is approximately six hundred and fifty feet southwest of the Temecula Parkway and Jedediah Smith Road intersection. And then moving on to the space itself, the applicant provided the floor plan, uh, which is what you see on the left, and the image on the right is the street view of the outside of the business suite. The space itself is thousand seventy-eight square feet of floor space, which is what you see in the rectangle highlighted in red. The studio space consists of, uh, which is what you see in the area in red, consists of movable tables and chairs for crafting activities. There is also inside a countertop and sink area, which is for employees only. We have a bathroom and a storage room as well. Now we move on to the analysis of the proposed license. So the applicant seeks a type forty-two on-sale beer and wine license, which will allow for the incidental sale of alcohol to registered customers for the crafting studio. It's important to note that distilled spirits, pre-mixed cocktail sales are not permitted with this license, nor are patrons under twenty-one allowed. And the sale to, alcohol sale to outside users is also not permitted. Serving alcohol is strictly incidental to the primary use, which is providing essentially crafting classes for individuals and groups as the primary function. And just to cr- um, go into more of the, the primary function, uh, which is the creative studio, this is more of a do-it-yourself woodworking and craft studio that offers our customers classes to create home decorations, trays, lawn games, clocks, holiday items, and other crafting miscellaneous projects. The operating hours, uh, are from ten AM through ten PM, seven days a week is what the CUP and PCN would allow, although it is anticipated that the peak hours will be, um, from three PM to ten PM, as stated in their conditions of approval, number fifteen. Presently, the applicant does not plan to offer food or, or snacks, although the applicant, uh, would elect, has the right to elect to do so in the future. It does not, um, necessarily affect their license. Per the applicant's statement of operations, outside food may be allowed in, to the premises. And in case you need a reminder as to when are findings for a PCN required, a PCN is required once the Department of A- Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, has determined that a specific location is in the census tract with over-concentration for liquor licenses. So Temecula itself is comprised of twenty individual census tracts. The subject property, um, or license concentration is based on county riverside population formulas, and the subject property corresponds to Census Tract four-three-two-point-zero-seven. And this census tract is in the southern vicinity, which you see in the, um, highlighted circle and the arrow, which runs along Pechanga Parkway and then easterly along Temecula Parkway. Here's a larger image of that area. As previously mentioned, over-concentration is based on residential population within a census tract. And according to ABC's website, the population in the census tract was four thousand five hundred and four as of August twenty-twenty-one, which is the latest data that was, that's available, um, in their website. There are two off-sale licenses that are allowed in this census tract, and there are four on-sale licenses that are allowed in the census tract. There are currently twenty-seven active licenses. And then the area that you see highlighted in, um, red is where the concentration of alcohol licenses run. So the concentrations in these areas includes Mexico Cafe, gas stations, pharmacies, there's Temecula Creek Plaza, Temecula, Temecula Creek Village, and then that Stater Brothers Shopping Center as well. From an envi- environmental standpoint, the project is exempt per SEQA one-five-zero-six-one-B-three and Section one-five-three-zero-one, Class One, as existing facilities. And with that, staff recommends the planning commission approve PA twenty-three zero-one-seventy-five as the, um, for the conditional use permit, and PA twenty-three zero-three-four-three for the PCN, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Staff's here to answer any questions, as is the applicant.
Any questions of staff?
Do you have, uh, pictures of the interior of the business?
Pictures of the interior right now, no.
Bob, any questions?
No, I'm, excuse me, the business is not open yet?
No, it's open.
It is open.
It's, it's, um, not allowed to serve alcohol, to my understanding, it's not open. I understand also that in the conditional use permit hearing process, they had tenant improvements concurrently running. That's why I also don't have photos, because there was construction simultaneously happening. And so, um, uh, yeah, it's, but technically.
So it's not open?
There's no alcohol serving or anything like that.
No, but I mean, is it open as a?
Is the business open, that's the question.
To my understanding, no.
No, okay.
We can, we can ask the applicant, yeah.
Exactly.
Um, any other questions? Okay, so, do you have another question?
I just want to confirm, minors would not be allowed per this, um, ABC license?
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, twenty-one and under, um, or twenty-one and over. So, couple of questions. Can you go back to the slide where you said there's twenty-seven active licenses? So just in this area, there's twenty-seven active licenses, is what you're saying?
That's correct, this information.
And that includes Stater Brothers area all the way down to where Mexican Cafe is?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Um, and then I noticed it's next door to Toast, which is a very popular place. So have we heard anything from their surrounding neighbors? Any concerns that they've had?
No, there's no, no concerns, no comment.
And they're aware of it, the, the neighbors are aware of it?
Yes, um, there's a public noticing that goes with this hearing item.
Does it go, it goes to the neighbors?
It's conspicuously located.
Like mailed to the neighbors?
Yeah, all the property owners within, in this project, eleven hundred feet in the vicinity were noticed.
And you did not hear from anyone?
I did not.
Okay, all right, any other questions from staff? Okay, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant up, please. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. So are you guys open? Because I drove by there and it looks like you're open, but you're not.
We're not open yet.
But you have your sign up and everything?
If you can speak into the mic.
Yeah, great.
No, ma'am, we're not open yet. We do move in and out, just as ourselves, working on stuff, because we are able to function, uh, but we are not open.
Remind us of the name of the business again.
It's Board and Brush Creative Studio.
Board and Brush, cool, okay. Tell us a little bit more about the business, people.
Absolutely, we also have some, uh, kind of things that we do there, so you guys can actually touch and feel it, see what we're doing. Uh, you want to pass that around? This is Jennifer, she's my co-owner, also my fiancee.
Oh.
Um, basically we.
Hopefully it's successful.
Oh, it, it is gonna be successful, as long as we get through you guys, which we're hoping to. So the business is basically like a sip and paint, right? Except we're doing woodwork projects.
But you do wood instead of necessarily just painting?
Yes, we also do glass etching and cornhole, um, backyard projects, large dominoes projects. Basically, we do benches as well, planner boxes, I mean, you name it, we do it. The goal is, it shows up as just regular wood like we have over there sitting there, and, uh, the pa- the, the parties, they sign up for it online. So we're not gonna be open twenty-four hours a day like they were talking about. It's scheduled classes. The classes usually run about three hours, and they're all instructor-led, uh, by myself and Jennifer. At the moment, um, we will be hiring employees in the future, but not right now. And we lead them through the distressing process, the sanding process, the staining process, and then the painting process. And you have to have zero, zero artistic ability to come in and knock it out. It's, uh, completely led by us, and by the time you're done, you get some cool projects to take home with you. It's all about the experiences, that's really what we're pushing through. Uh, team, team synergy, plus we're working with Toast and Nineteen-O-Nine and those guys, um, and local areas, because we really want to create that environment where people can have fun. And we're also really trying to boost up local businesses as well.
So what do you mean, you're working with Toast and Nineteen-O-Nine, what does that mean?
We've spoke, we've spoken to the ownership there, and, um, we've talked to them about creating different situations where their people can go get a discount at, at Toast and come in and sit on our project, or vice versa. Also doing team-building activities and things like that with the adult staff. And, and what was that?
Fundraising with, for the local nonprofits and things like that. We can donate a certain portion of, um, somebody's reservation to fundraiser, um, or, uh, we've actually already done a couple for, um, some Pop Warner teams and things like that. Another, uh, church organization that was working in Murrieta for a fundraiser to rebuild part of their building. Um, so just helping out the community, doing some collabs and things like that.
What do you feel like is your main reason for wanting a type forty-two license?
It's a requirement by our franchise.
Oh.
Yes.
So where is this franchised?
We, they have how many?
Al- almost three hundred, they're based out of Wisconsin. It's a franchise requirement, which is why.
Wisconsin.
We're open, but we, we could operate, but we can't because the franchise requires the beer and wine license.
Interesting, hmm.
And, uh, just to add on to it, I, I recently retired from the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, I spent thirteen years there. I just recently retired from the Navy after doing twenty-two years with them. Um, so I completely understand the ser- seriousness when it comes to alcohol and being able to gauge where people are when they come into the actual event and everything else. And I myself, and I know Jennifer too, um, we won't allow anybody to come in, drink to excess or anything like that. It will be the, the staff at all times handling the alcohol and just putting it on the table for them. And, um, we all, we're also all leads-trained. We took the, uh, California, uh, training through the ABC, so we have our certificates and everything to back that up as well.
How does that work when, when they're there in their class and then they leave and get in their cars?
Well, did you want to answer?
Sure, um, so, uh, like Ramon was saying, the classes are two to three hours long. They are literally busy all the time. That's one of the reasons why we're not gonna do a lot of food unless it's a, some sort of promo, um, for a business, because they are literally hands-on the entire time. They don't have a lot of time, so they can take a sip, you know, of a drink or maybe two, but they just don't have a lot of time to consume alcohol. They're literally doing something the whole time. So as far as driving away, if there was an issue, if we felt like somebody was having an issue, we would definitely address that and handle it.
So you don't feel like it's a main part of your business at all?
Absolutely not.
Interesting that they require that, that's interesting.
I think it's more of the, um, togetherness, experience, both, and just like they do with, uh, paint and sips and things like that.
Thank you, anything else you want to share about the business?
Uh, no, you're all welcome to come in, um.
But you're not open yet.
Well, in the future, if we do get open.
We're hoping they will be soon.
Oh, I see, okay, got it. I got it, I got it, I got it. Okay, any, any questions?
Describe the tools and materials that will be used.
All right, you want to take that, honey, you want to take it?
Sure, um, so as far as, uh, tools and materials, so they'll come in with the raw wood, that's what they get, and they'll have a stencil. Um, beyond that, they'll have sandpaper, meat tenderizer, tenderizers, because they distress the wood, nails, screws, um, there are automatic drills to, um, secure the, the support, so the board that you saw had to support in the back. That's about the extent of the dangerous part of it, is just screwing in the, yeah. Um, other than that, hammers, um, that's it.
So no saws, no laser engravers, nothing like that?
He gets to do it.
That's my job, I get to, I get to do the heavy lifting, lifting before everybody gets there.
They will not be cutting at all.
Okay. Will you be doing classes just for kids at any time?
The only way we can do it because of the beer and wine license is if we are off-site. So no children, nobody under twenty-one is allowed in the studio at all.
Okay, so you, you, I'm thinking, you know, whether you had like a, a cer- certain day of the week that you just did kids or something like that.
If you guys want to make that happen, that would be great, but we can't.
No, 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 no.
We're not allowed to under the ABC license that we get. Um, say for instance, if we did use, if we did go to a different location like Toast or something, and they had a license and our insurance covered that, then we would be able to do that. But at the property where we're asking for the permit, no. Uh, nobody under twenty-one's allowed, and, uh, while we're operating.
Will you allow alcohol to be brought in by the person?
No, sir.
No, okay.
That's it? Good question. Questions?
No, that was my question, they're gonna be cutting anything.
Any questions, Gary?
No, I do have. No, I do have a comment for later, though.
Okay, all right, thank you, tell me, Jennifer and.
Ramon.
Ramon, thank, I don't think you said your name.
Oh, you know what, I'll pay for that later.
I would have remembered that, anyway, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, all right, um, do we have any public comments?
We have none.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and time for discussion before we make a motion. Any discussion from my colleagues?
I'm just, um, tonight is interesting because you may know that next, it's the next week, the City Council and the Planning Commission are gonna have a joint meeting that's been announced, and it's going to be dealing with alcohol in the city, so, um, you, you're ahead of that, which is probably a good thing, but, um, that'll, that may be of interest to you, or, or, or it may not, but I, I've just, uh, the, the questions that are brought up illustrate the problem, some of the problems that we've encountered um, in the city in granting, or, like, we don't grant ABC licenses, all we do is grant the CUP, and it's up to ABC to grant the license. But, um, we, um, I'm okay, I, I lost my train of thought on that, so, um, I just think it's, the timing was particularly, uh, interesting from our perspective because it may interest you or not next week, um, but we, there are a lot of issues surrounding the licenses that, uh, I think have created different situations in the city. And so we hope, hopefully, at the meeting next week, we can come to some sort of a, um, understanding or, or.
Direction.
An ability to, to progress. Yeah, direction, so anyhow, that doesn't have. Anyhow, that doesn't have anything to do with tonight, other than it may be of interest to, to any of those that are involved with ABC licenses, and particularly if you are concerned as a citizen or a resident of Temecula with any licenses that are going to be granted through our CUP process, approval process. So that's, that's the only point I wanted to make. It may interest you, it may be boring for you next week, but, but it is going to be available for all, all the people of Temecula.
Thank you. Any other comments, Fernando?
Yeah, I had kind of the same, the same comment. And I, I think I've never been to, to a business like this, so I wouldn't know, you know, how to, how to comment on it. But I do see that other restaurants have the same concept, where you can go to the yard house and you can, three hours, you reserve a party of maybe like for someone's birthday, and then they paint, and then you can drink, and then, you know, it's, it's... I haven't done it, my wife has, but I do see that happening more and more. It's usually more for painting, I haven't seen it with wood. But I think it's the same concept. My only concern would be in the future. For example, if this business was arts and crafts, right? And, you know, if we can have something on the resolution of the, of the CUP that identified only a woodcraft business can have this ABC license tied to it. Because then, and any other business can come a different type of operation, because it's really like an open floor plan, it's an open concept. But if you tie the component of the wood or crafts, or maybe, I, I don't know, maybe in 10 years, you know, the business wants to be now a portrait painting business and arts and crafts, but of painting, and maybe another business wants to take it, and it's a, it's kind of the same use. So that, that would be my only concern, is to, is if, if there's any way we can, we can do that, to tie the CUP with the type of use that is being used. And I think I would be comfortable with that, because then I understand the concept of how the business is being operated. In the future, it'll continue being operated the same way. And anytime that business, if, I'm just saying, if it was to change, then it'll come back to us, because there would be a change, it would be the same type of business. But, but I do see this type of trend happening within the last five years, in, in restaurants, is what I see. So it's kind of interesting now that a business is coming like that.
Matt?
Yeah, the conditions of approval are tied to the statement of operations that are submitted with the application. And the, the statement of operations the applicants require to answer very specific questions, which really address your concerns about this maybe morphing into another type of business.
Correct, that, that's, that's my concern.
So I think, in looking at it, we can rely on these statement of operations.
My, my concern, just to kind of add to that, would be the morphing to using other kinds of tools. I have 20 years of sand etching experience, laser engraving experience, and I cannot imagine doing any of those things, drinking any alcohol, using saws, things like that. They were, I, I cut off the end of my finger on a, on a blade. I mean, there's those kind of things that, that can happen, and that's, that's what I would be concerned about. So I appreciate the, you know, the words that it's based upon those conditions.
Thank you, I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues. And I would just add, kind of along with Gary, that, and I don't know if you're new to Temecula, you didn't say, but we as a commission are, you know, one of the findings that we always look at is the safety and health of our community. And that's very important personally to me. And so I think we look at each one of these applications individually. And, and so it's very important to us that it's safe. I think that's why Bob brought up the tools. When he first asked that, I'm like, why is he asking what kind of tools? You know, but now I understand that. And I think, you know, and also what Fernando brought up. So I think just the fact that we do a lot of this. We, we listen to this a lot, and a lot of these applicants come for a liquor license. And we really need to know why, right? And we need to know that it's not the main part of their business, that, that it's going to be responsible, that people are going to be safe. And that's really what I think we're here for, to make that determination and make that decision. And so I just want to make sure that we do that as we're looking at this, that we feel good about it being good for our community, and, and safe, and responsible, and, and that we can trust those statement of operations, Matt, that you talked about. So, did you want to say something?
Oh, I just wanted to read what the proposed business operations are, so you'll get an understanding. So it says, adults will attend pre-scheduled three-hour classes where they will distress, stain, stencil, and paint wood projects, decorations, trays, lawn games, clocks, holiday items, as well as decorate tote bags, doormats, and burlap projects to take home with them, or to take home. So that's, I, I mean, cut it down, there's other language there as well, but that's, that's the description of what's actually happening on the business.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. So with that, do we have any more discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve with the, the conditions of approval.
Is there a second?
I could second, as long as, I do understand that the, the condition of approval number eight is a step, a statement of operation. And then if you could put like, it's, this is like an attachment, right? Okay. And also if you could add some type of definition on there, saying that the business would be identified as an arts and crafts studio, and that's the only use permitted within this license.
Is that something that we can add to the motion?
Or do you think that's enough for the?
It's in the resolution now, and it's also in the conditions of approval.
Okay, then, then that's fine, then it's not needed.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Yeah, Bob moved it, and Fernando.
A second, yes.
So all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion, carry. All right.
Was Ramon, right? Congratulations, and I wanted to thank you for your service to the Navy and also as a peace officer for the, for Ventura County. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so make it safe, we'll come visit you.
Oh, one more thing I wanted to add, that I couldn't say before. As you know, you're in Temecula Valley, and we have tremendous wineries and wine, or vineyards, and we have plenty of microbreweries and that type of thing. So just consider local, local businesses. We, we love to see them supported, but I know you're a business, business people, and you will do what's right for your business. But if you just consider that, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure, 100%, that's one of our main goals, to bring back the city.
All right, thank you. Okay, commissioner reports. Want to start on this end? Fernando? You got anything you want to share? Bob?
Breaking news, Ron. We have, we can knock off, and Matt, we can knock off a few feet of our needed sidewalks. In the neighborhood I live in, my HOA has put in a whole sidewalk on Long Valley Drive, on, next to Long Valley Creek. And that was just a street without a sidewalk before, and they've done that, and I'm assuming they did it in, in conjunction with the new forestry, the tree plan that we have, that type of thing. Because I know I saw some eucalyptus trees come out and some new ones planted, so. Anyhow, that's, that's about probably a quarter mile of sidewalk that we can scratch off that I brought up at the other meeting. So that was my, thank you.
I don't have anything. Commission subcommittee reports. You guys, Matt for one? We do have one report.
The general plan subcommittee met this afternoon, and we discussed the housing element and the general plan, and some changes that are going to need to be made to comply with laws from the state, and also bring our municipal code up to, up to snuff when it has requirements that it needs to have. That item will be coming to the commission in the pretty near future, I think.
In October.
October. And there will be quite a lot of explanation with that, but I think that's as far as I dare go with, with that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development Director, we have Matt, our assistant director, stepping in tonight.
Yeah, just one update, and you already brought it up, and that's the workshop on the 28th, from nine to noon. Joint workshop between the Planning Commission, City Council, which we haven't had one of these since the early 2000s, so very important meeting, and we're looking forward to it.
Monticello, are you going to be the one there?
It'll be in the conference center.
Of course. I'll be there, and Peter will be there as well.
Yep.
And that's all.
Thank you. All right, Ron?
French Valley Parkway is going strong, everything's been moving along. But we do have some closures upcoming. So the Santa Gertruda's Trail undercrossing there in that location is going to be closed next week intermittently, and then it'll be a full closure in a few months. So if you have anybody asking about that, that trail will need to be closed during the construction. And then as far as full-on freeway closures, there's are some upcoming in October, and I'll give you guys a heads up on that. But it'll be a full shutdown of I-15.
Do we give him your number, or what?
That's Ovlin in our office. I'll get you Ovlin's number.
You'll be out of town.
No, yeah, we'll, we'll answer any questions.
I did get a text about the CRC bathrooms, but the shower's still not. When is that happening?
They were looking at the flooring. You should be getting a notice for a ribbon cutting here pretty soon, so you'll be invited, all, all commissioners will be invited.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
That's been a long time. Okay, all right. Anything else, Ron?
That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Please pass on how much we appreciate Public Works and all they do.
You bet, thank you.
And we appreciate community development and all you guys do,